All right, good morning. Half a day. The Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Doing this one more time. Now we've got better signal, hopefully. Today is Tuesday, October 20, 2020. The time now is 9:25. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and accommodating the Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notes for this virtual public hearing were disseminated via email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, October 12, and on Friday, October 16. We will be discussing Bill 400-35-COR, introduced by Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, an act to make appropriations necessary to safeguard the public health of the people of Guam by amending Public Law Number 35-99. General rules of conduct of this Zoom meeting. This Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by myself. Members of the committee and/or noncommittee members wishing to speak may indicate their desire to chair to me through the INAF chapter feature. I'm hearing background here. Tom, you might want to mute yours first. Ryan, I need to mute your background. Thank you. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for written keeping purposes. For call to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Committee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Question and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal infirmance as to the character or the motive any speaker, Senator, or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of the general rule of conduct will result in removal from this public hearing. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in other activity during the hearing. I have no problem if you're drinking or having a snack while trying to maintain your health. Failure to maintain visibility may cause removal from the live stream. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending this morning's hearing. I'd like to introduce my colleagues that have joined us. I have the author of the bill, Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes. We have Senator Telo Tadegui. We have Senator Theresa Terlay, which is the Oversight Chair of the Department of Public Health. We have Senator Kelly Mars Titanal. We have Senator Mary Camatso Torres. I know we have Senator Luis Munia. And we also have joining us today from the Department of Public Health. We have our new director, Arthur Sonogstein. We have his deputy director, Terry Ullman. We have Tommy Tadegui, the ASO. Tess Argangelo, I think you're the one that handles all the federal funding there. So that's great. And then we have Stephanie Lorenzo from UG and also Paul Stotter, right? Okay, we have Devon Suzuki. We have Bethany Taylor from Harvest Baptist Church. We also have Charlene Sinikus. At this point, right before we start with the opening, I'll ask the Sarn Arms to please have the folks from Public Health to be sworn in. All right, Sarn Arms?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. Proper identification to the answer though. Can I have you guys answer your name? I mean state your name and then answer the oath. Okay, so all those that are sworn in, can you please raise your right hand?
My God, I guess it's us.
Okay, under penalties of perjury, do you all affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, say, oh, you got?
I do.
I do. Arthur Sonogstein, I do. Terry Ullman, I do.
I do.
Okay, Mr. Chair, they're all under oath.
All right, and thank you, Sarn Arms. I'll now ask the Speaker to please provide an opening statement.
Goodness, half a day, Mr. Chair. Sisus to all of you here this morning on this Zoom. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for calling this public hearing on Bill 400-35, which is an act to make appropriations necessary to safeguard the public health of the people of Guam by amending Public Law Number 35-99. And, Mr. Chair, looking back at my career in public service, I've always reminded myself that I'm here to serve the community that has given me so many blessings and opportunities. As public servants, we must remember that our manuqo sacrificed so much for us and that we are here to work and strive for a better future for our manhobin. And we are here this morning because, based on a letter from the Department of Public Health and Social Services Director, Mr. Artson Augustine, dated September 15, 2020, he had stated that critical services for our manuqo will start seeing cuts at the beginning of this fiscal year and that services for the abused and neglected women and children and much-needed resources for our foster kids and parents, as well as our homeless, will be cut at the beginning of the calendar year. And while I was criticized for voting no on the fiscal year 2021 budget, I believed in my heart of hearts that we couldn't give up on our community and our people. And at that time, I had told my team and myself that we needed to do better and we just can't give up on our people. And working closely with the administration, specifically with Magahaga and her fiscal team, I wanted to give a shout out to our public auditor, also BJ Cruz. We were able to identify about 11.5 million in the Healthy Futures Funds based on the 2019 independent audit of the government of Guam finances. Mr. Chair, I just want to share that this is real cash that we have in our coffers, cash that is much needed to provide critical services for our island's vulnerable population. And this bill would make and allow the Department of Public Health and Social Services to use the 11.5 million to fund the shortfalls they've identified. I've tried to embody the spirit of Ina Famalika. Mr. Chair, I know that my parents, Bill and Ann Munia, taught me and all my siblings that when you see a community in need, you just don't sit there. You stop, step up, and you help serve. And, Mr. Chair, I'd say that this measure today, and as you will hear from the panel before us today, we cannot and should not wait any longer. We have families, vulnerable individuals, that need these resources. And as a government, we need to do our part to ensure that we take care of our people. And I hope that my colleagues can help support this endeavor. And I look forward to this discussion. And, Mr. Chair, if I may, I... When we passed, overrode the budget in September 15 of 2020. And we got the letter from Public Health. It did name and it did attach the programs and the decreased amounts and the impact of when those services would have to be cut. And I'd like to ask that this letter and that the budget impact be appended to this committee hearing today. And also if the Director of Public Health and Social Services, Department of Public Health and Social Services, go ahead and read into the record the impacted programs as the list adds up to almost 11 million. So I want to say thank you for taking the time. I know that there were some concerns about the financial impact, I mean, the fiscal note not being provided. And I was informed by the administration today that there wasn't the fiscal note that was sent down. So I just want to also note that for the record. And I want to say thank you. And I hope that my colleagues again can give consideration to this much-needed bill for our island of Guam, so our people. So sisus masi and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak on this bill this morning. Sana masi.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. You mentioned a letter that somebody would be reading. What letter is that? Is anyone going to read that?
I'd be more than, if you can ask the director to read it, because it's his letter. It was dated September 15, 2020. And he also has a list on the second page or on the back page that notes all the services of the impact. So if he could read that into the record, unless you want me to read it, but I think he should be the one to read it because he wrote it.
Yes, no, no, I prefer to have the director read it. Arthur Sonogstein will read it. And then also, I'm looking for my copy. I don't think I... You will send this to message to the Guam Legislature or...?
Yes, sir. It was submitted and sent out through messages and comments.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Art, why don't you go ahead and read it? All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. Art?
Okay, Mr. Chair, Senator Sonogstein. Memorandum dated September 15, 2020, to Acting Chief of Staff, Office of the Governor, from Director, Department of Public Health and Social Services, subject Bill 282-35-Impact. It was currently written, "Bill 282-35 will cause significant operational shortfalls within our agency, primarily the following essential services," and there's a provision there attached. "Under senior citizen services, we will need to discontinue..." "We will discontinue the adult daycare services from January 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Discontinue case management services from January 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Discontinue in-home services from January 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Discontinue senior center services from January 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Discontinue transportation services from January 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Suspension of home-delivered weekend meal services for all of fiscal year 2021. Discontinue 24-hour emergency protective services shelter from January 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Discontinue legal assistance services from May 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Welfare services. Discontinue foster payments, foster care payments from January 16, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Discontinue ALI Shelter 1, abused and neglected women, and ALI Shelter 2, abused and neglected children services from January 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. Discontinue Guma San Jose services, island's only homeless shelter from January 1, 2021, to September 30, 2021. All the above services are critical to the mission of the department. I know that we all value the immeasurable work done by Public Health and Social Services, and I hope additional funding can be identified to assist the department during these most trying times." Arthur Sonogstein, acting. Attached on page two of the memo addressed to the Acting Chief of Staff on September 15, 2020 is a table that lists the names of the program, the amount that each program is going to have in terms of the decrease, and the impact. Would you like me to read the table as well?
Well, Art, you know, I wanted to ask you a very specific question. As you wrote that letter to the Chief of Staff of the administration, did you get a response on why they never gave you the $6 million in 2020 that you were supposed to have gotten under Bill 35-36? Did you ask that question? Because, you know, if you did receive the $6 million, there wouldn't be 11.5 million right now. It'd be a lot less. Okay, I just wanted to ask that question. If you asked that question about the $6 million that Public Health was entitled to get in 2020?
You're talking about the MIP $6 million, Ms. Senator?
Well, you know, when I look at Public Law 35-36, that's correct. I think that's the Medicaid program, $6 million.
On the $6 million, Tommy?
Bill, Public Law 35-36, that's a simple question. If you didn't ask it, then you didn't. And we'll just go ahead and move along and give a total.
No, I did not inquire about the $6 million that was in the prior fiscal year.
And the only reason why, Art, I'm asking that question because if you had gotten the $6 million for Medicaid, we wouldn't be discussing too much about Medicaid today or any additional money. It would be a lot less than $6, than $11 million. Okay, I just want to make sure that that's understood.
Okay.
Right, and can you just give us a total on your page two so everybody can hear it? That probably get a copy of your page two.
On page two, the total amount of all those programs is $10,492,269,000.
All right, thank you. Madam Speaker, did you have any ideas you wanted to bring up before we start asking questions and asking for anyone else to testify?
Mr. Chair, since you've given the... I was hoping that those that were in the community, if they wanted to share their presentation, because I did want to ask Director Sonogstein, if that request was probably before his time, but if he's gotten any responses from the administration to date since he's been on board, so...
Okay, if you want, Madam Speaker, we'll have everybody else testify, and then we'll come back and then we'll start with the director, and then we'll work our way down.
I appreciate it.
Okay, and then I would skip then pretty much Public Health folks because I know they're going to echo pretty much what the director stated. We'll go down to Stephanie. Do you have anything you wanted to testify in support of the bill or comments about the bill? You're good, okay. We've got Devon Suzuki. Oh, you have something prepared? Okay, then go ahead.
Thank you. Manana Sisus, my name is Stephanie Lorenzo, and I'm here. And I'm here in my capacity as a social work student at the University of Guam. And I'm in progress of my senior internship at the Bureau of Social Services Administration, also known as BOSA. Sisus Masi for this opportunity to provide favorable testimony in support of Bill 400. If passed, this will give much-needed funding to the Department of Public Health and Social Services, specifically to those divisions that are greatly impacted if Public Law 35-99 is not amended. Seven months ago, our daily routine had to change overnight. Our frontliners stepped up to the plate while we all added new roles to our lives, such as substitute teachers, homeschooling, caretaking for our manuqo, and for those who were dependent on senior citizen services. A letter dated September 15, 2020 from then-acting DPHSS Director Sonogstein. And in this letter, he addressed the significant shortfalls within the agency that would occur without Bill 400. This bill, if passed, would continue critical senior citizen services like the adult daycare, the 24-hour emergency protective services shelter, and the home-delivered weekend meal services. These are just to name a few. This bill, if passed, would also continue imperative services within the social welfare division. Without this bill, there would be a discontinuation of foster care payments, a discontinuation of services from ALI Shelter 1, where abused and neglected women go for refuge, and a discontinuation of services from ALI Shelter 2, where abused and neglected children go for protection. And finally, without this bill, there would be a discontinuation from all services from Guma San Jose, which is our island's only homeless shelter. The passage of this bill will safeguard our island's victims of domestic violence. It will ensure that our manuqo, our sinas, continue to receive their essential services. And more importantly, it will ensure our future and those most affected by COVID-19. During my time at BOSA, I had the opportunity to connect to two foster families to gain insight on how the budget bill that was passed affected them and their blended family. Over the summer, Mrs. B quit her job of 10 years to homeschool her two foster children. She knew that this pandemic would last long after the school year started. She wanted to help her children and be there for them. That sacrifice was made before the FY21 budget became law. Her husband is a self-employed contractor whose current project is almost completed. After the family has... After that, the family has no source of income. Mrs. B is fostering two growing children, both under the age of five. Both, I'm sorry, both under the age of 12. The second parent, Mrs. C, is fostering three children who are all under the age of five, and one of the child is disabled. With the new fiscal year, doctor visits are costly. Medicaid, the insurance for our foster kids, are under, is not accepted at all clinics. This leaves our foster children from not getting all the services they may need. All right, there will be... ...off parents that we need to keep through. These families open their homes for our children, open their hearts, and provide that warm and safe environment that foster children were deprived of. Without this bill, we are depriving our foster families of their fair share for helping to raise our children. While BOSA's mission is to reunify families, the reality is that our foster children were found to be living in neglectful and abusing homes. Foster parents, foster families, they are vital and crucial in helping children heal, helping them learn, and even helping them reach developmental milestones. Our island currently has 266 foster children, and the payments for the ages range between 575 for newborns to 11 years old and 775 for ages 12 to 17. That was from 2019. But without any change to the current budget law, the number of children currently in foster care may drop. Without funding, it would be difficult for more families to foster. In closing, the passage of Bill 400 will renew the spark of hope to those who foster, those who want to foster, and for the children placed in foster care. Furthermore, it will continue the safeguarding of our manuqo by ensuring they receive their needed services. This bill protects our island's future and our island's greatest generation. Sisus Masi for the opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll have now Mr. Devon Suzuki. Do you have something you wanted to testify today?
Half a day, half a day. Thank you, guys, so much. Speaker, all the senators here, thank you so much for having me today. Yeah, so Speaker asked me if I could, you know, come on and just share a little bit. I did get my hands on the letter here. I got my hands, and I was able to read everything and go through it. I just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for, you know, coming in and listening to the Bill 400. I find it to be a very good solution to what I would call a problem that we're going to face in January. I am a product of the ALI Shelter. I'm also a product of the foster homes. My dad is Michael Suzuki. He's been a therapeutic foster parent here for a very long time. And then he decided to leave the foster care system, and he actually works at Guma San Jose now, the only homeless shelter here on island. So, you know, just me personally, I was able to join the army. I got to serve my country. I was with the 800 that deployed in 2013 to Afghanistan. So, you know, like I tell everyone in the world, everywhere that I've been, Guam raised me. You know, all these programs, all these things that we have here, they raised me. And they raise a lot of other children, too. Professionally, my day job, I'm a private investigator. So I understand the hard, hard decisions that come with this budget. You know, $10 million is a lot of money. But we have a team here that's willing to and already has found the solution for that. So I feel it be a very good idea to go ahead and just support them. The testimony right before me hit the nail on the head. You know, we have 266 foster children in the system. I was fortunate to be adopted into a foster home, but all my brothers, you know, were foster children as well. Every Christmas, every summer, whatever it came, you know, my parents always made sure that we had good stuff. You know, we were always taken care of. I went to a private school. I went to Father Duennas. But, you know, my dad had to work for that. And sometimes when these payments would get cut before, as we've seen this be a scare tactic, I grew up knowing that this was a scare tactic, almost a sense of, let's just let the team that has a solution, you know, do that solution. So, you know, not to get too into it and everything, but thank you so much for everyone here. Speaker, thank you. This is an amazing Bill 400. It's a problem solver. And I was very happy to read that. That'll be about it. Thank you so much, guys.
All right, thank you, Devon. We also have Bethany Taylor. Ms. Taylor, do you have a testimony you wanted to provide today to the committee?
Yes, thank you so much for having us. First, for bringing this bill forward. I would like to speak on behalf of the foster families on Guam. I am the Director of Harvest House, which is a nonprofit servicing the foster community on Guam. And so I hope I can speak on behalf of the other 40 foster families plus all the relative placements that we service and the ALI Shelter and Sanctuary and the many other services that we do for our foster children on Guam. Considering as well, my husband and I have been fostering over a decade now on Guam, and we've had over 40 foster children enter our home. We have seven currently in our home. And I can tell you that as a foster parent, the services or the stipend that is given to us as a foster parent is critical to maintain their well-being so that we can put them in private education if we choose to. And right now, obviously, I can homeschool seven children online so you can see the distractions in my house, but... Thank you. She wanted to add to it. So I just want to thank, again, I love the testimonies that were before me about trying to solve a problem. And again, as foster families, when we read this, we have a little chat group, and we were like, this just can't happen. Most of us foster parents would not be able to continue fostering without the stipend, without that encouragement, without that added support because we do not do it for the money. Absolutely not. But the money and the stipend does help educate the child, give the services to our children that we need. And these are Guam's children. They are under the protective custody of the government, and we are caring for them. So we do need every help and support from you to help us take care of them, just like any parent needs help taking care of their children. This is your way of helping us and supporting us to do the most incredible work of transforming a child's soul and transforming a child's life. Sorry for the interruptions. And I just find it so important that you just come alongside us in this way and don't take that vital support away from us because not only is Harvest House trying to recruit more foster families to do this amazing work, we're also supporting families that are already doing it. And both need this support. So I, looking at the bill, I am only concerned about... I'm not legislature, so I'm just speaking from an outsider, and I hope I am educated enough to say this. But I am only concerned on where the actual money is going. And obviously, we just read the shortfalls of what is happening. And all of those services, not only foster care, is vital to our community. We also help ALI Shelter out and even the Women's Abusive Shelter. Very important to not remove the children. At least we have a shelter for these families to go to. So, and the homeless shelter, everything is so important on this list. So I am just concerned with the rate of how COVID-19 is going that these funds are not allocated to do testing or to do any kind of, or help with the public school system. And I don't know, there's just a lot of needs that are coming up with the Department of Public Health. And I want to make sure these funds are allocated for those services listed below that are so vital to keep going. So I thank you that it is a way that we can support this community, and I rally behind you. And all the foster moms say, please, thank you. From the bottom of our hearts, support us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bethany. I'm just looking at the list of folks that I have listed here. The only one I have is Charlene Sinikus. You're from Public Health, correct?
Yes, I am. I'm with the Division of Senior Citizens, so a lot of the services on the...
Don't worry, I just needed to know that. Were you sworn in, ma'am?
Yes, I was part of the group. Yes, I did say I do.
I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, I'm going to ask first now, and I'll start with the Speaker. If you have any questions to the folks that testified, and then we'll move down the line for everyone to ask questions. And then we'll screen it from there. And then I'll end with my questions at the end of everybody. All right? Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you. And I just want to correct for the record of anything that when we got this letter from Mr. Sonogstein, it wasn't addressed to the Speaker. It was given through us, through the media, for comment. So I just want to first thank everybody who presented testimony in support of the efforts and their support for helping and being a part of the program to help our community out and to give love and show love to those who really need that GLA. to those who are, uh, really need that TLC. And, and, uh, as we look at the amounts, Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask the Director of, uh, um, Public Health and Social Services that if, um, these, uh, fundings come in, uh, will he ensure that every, uh, program here uh, will be attended to and that there will not be a, uh, interruption of services? Miss?
Art?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, I'm, I apologize, Madam Speaker and Chairman Sinagastin. With regard to the Speaker's question, yes, the appropriation that you're presenting before us in the amount of eleven million, five eighteen and ninety dollars combining both the Medicaid and the operations will be used for its intended purpose and we, I provide you that assurance.
Uh, thank you very much. And then to the presenters, uh, here today, Mr. Chair. Uh, again, I want to extend my undakulina sijus for Maasi for them sharing their testimony and ask, uh, each of them if there is anything that they can share with us policymakers moving forward that, or recommendations to better, um, uh, provide, uh, for the programs that Public Health, uh, shares to the community. Are there any solutions or other recommendations that they can, uh, share with us uh, to make this right in the spirit of Ina Fama like in making sure that these programs don't get interrupted? Are there other recommendations that they can provide to us? So maybe I can start with Bethany and then Stephanie and then Dylan, if he's still on, Devin, if he's still on.
Okay, who do we start with?
Beth- Bethany?
Bethany. Okay. Bethany?
Yes, I would just like, I'm thankful to hear the Department of Public Health, um, assure us that those funds are going to be allocated to the uh, selected things that were, um, mentioned in this letter because, uh, I just find that to be vital to what, um, the community needs. So is that what was your, the answer to your question? I'm sorry.
There was any other recommendations, if there, if we're missing anything moving forward, is there any other res- resolution, solutions or recommendations you'd like to provide, not just with this bill, but anything in general, so that we're not missing anything?
Awesome. No, I think that you covered it in this bill. There are a few things that I would love, um, to have a senator rally around, um, Harvest House and a few things that the foster care, um, bill itself needs a few changes to, I believe, going forward, but I think that this uh, certain bill is covering what we need, the stipend, um, for the foster care payment. That's what I am, um, advocating for, the foster care payment for foster parents and that is, um, what is being addressed today. So I believe that this bill covers that initially.
Thank you. Um, Bethany, I, I want to share with you that, uh, one of the interns from the Public Policy Institute I know was working closely with you on a a solution to one of your issues and I'm hoping that we can follow up, uh, with, with you, uh, from the foster care group. And maybe we can, we can, uh, share that with our colleagues if, if the draft is done, the intern, uh, Anna Lina. So hopefully, hopefully we can, uh, uh, follow up and make sure that that the i- the issue that your team brought up, that we can, uh, continue to work with the Public Policy Institute on that. Uh, so thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Chair, may I ask the same to, uh, the questions to both Stephanie and, uh, Devin? So?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Thank you, Speaker, and I actually don't have any, um, that at this time, but I can talk to the Bosa and maybe I can give you a response via email.
Thank you so very much. And then Devin, i- is there any other recommendations or ideas that you may be able to work with, not just with this bill, but moving forward so that we make sure that, that if there's any gaps in services that, that we, we have some positive solutions moving forward?
Oh, absolutely, Speaker. Thank you so much. And professionally speaking, everyone, I in no way mean to overstretch, I'd stay in my lane, but just professionally, uh, as a private investigator, I always tell myself like, if it's an elder, you know, that's someone that I'm going to pay more attention to. I've had cases in Los Angeles where I've done free cases for children, free cases for elders. If you tell me that you're a foster child in my office, I'm probably going to leave the office right then and there to make sure I could do everything for your case. So just in the social setting of, of everything, it just kind of baffled me in the sense to see there be a list like this. I would just recommend professionally like, don't touch like elders, foster children, like there are certain brackets in society that I feel like even myself that when they come for me for help, that's, I'm, it's free, you know, it's free. I'm never going to touch you. Everything that I do is for you. You know, and that could be a personal impact to myself, but, you know, just morally, ethically speaking, as far as business policy and everything goes, it's kind of like a, a red zone to don't touch area. You know, policies shouldn't be written stating elders, foster children, homeless shelters and even services supporting those auxiliary families, helping those services should never be touched, should never even be verbiaged out. Like, the first thing I thought to myself was who even wrote this? Holy cow, this is like a, a very heavy list, you know? So stay, maybe stay away professionally from impacting communities that already have a lot of soc- social turmoil, you know, as I'd like to say. Uh, we need to do everything that we can help those type of people because myself, when I was younger, that was something that this island did for me. That was something that the Guam Army National Guard did for me, Jeanette and Michael Suzuki did for me and everyone here. You know, there's a lot of faces here that I remember from a, from a, from a very long time ago in life. And it's because they had policies to make sure that people like I was taken care of. So thank you again so much, you know, not across professionally, but, uh, that's just where I stand.
All right. Thank you, Devin. Madam Speaker, do you have anyone else? Undo.
Thank you very much, uh, Devin, uh, for your presentation here this morning and your, and your, uh, committed support to making sure that these programs that Public Health and Social Services, uh, has resources to give out to the community, that these, uh, resources, uh, are not touched. And again, Mr. Chair, uh, for the opportunity to hear this bill again in the spirit of Ina Fama Malik and making sure that we as policymakers, uh, tell the community, uh, this is up, uh, you know, we're going to be upfront and forthright in making sure that these services don't get cut. Uh, these are the solutions that we can help and, uh, and make that happen. So thank you, uh, for the time, uh, you put into making sure that Bill four hundred is heard. And I ask that my colleagues support the efforts and I yield it, uh, to them to ask any questions to the panel members that are here. Sinamasi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Madam Speaker. Um, just looking at the screen. Senator Teresa Trelawney, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Yes, and if I could just confirm that Public Health did not want to testify on the bill?
No, um, I'm sorry. We, we actually sent a message in to testify to verbal support, but I'm not, we sent it into a staff. We would like to speak on it as well.
Okay. Let's do it.
Okay. Well, good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Sinagastin, Speaker Barnes, Committee Chair, um, Chair on Health, Senator Trelawney, and members of the Guam Legislature. I also want to take a moment to thank Stephanie and Devin and Ms. Bethany for your support of Bill four hundred dash thirty-five, which is before the current body. The Department of Public Health and Social Services in its entirety supports the passage of Bill four hundred dash thirty-five, the inact of appropriations necessary to safeguard the public health of the people of Guam by Amendment Public Law Number thirty-five dash ninety-nine. We, we are in full support. It will assist with our operations, is outlined in the memo dated September fifteen, twenty twenty, which I read earlier. One thing we do ask is for your consideration as a, as a legislative body to provide the Department of Public Health and Social Services with flexibility within our program funding. And the flexibility we speak of is that, for example, under the Medicaid program, if the match requirement changes and there happens to be additional funding available what was earmarked for Medicaid and we maximize the full amount that we would be able to based on the award given and the match requirement, that those funds remain with Public Health, but we be given the ability to reprogram that for other welfare and social services. To the, to those listening and watching, you may be wondering why you don't see Division of Public Health Program Services on the impact list. What's, what's the reality is, the Division of Public Health has many federal programs, federal programs that are supported by federal dollars. So their programs are, for the most part, covered by federal dollars. The programs in the list on the date, the letter dated September fifteen, twenty twenty, these are the programs that rely heavily on general fund and healthy future funds to provide the services that are provided to our seniors into those under our welfare programs. I cannot begin to impress upon the body the impact to our seniors. We're looking at a series of eight programs or so. And just looking at the names of the programs from case management to home-delivered meals to legal services. These are provided to over three thousand seniors who are in our community. These are the home and community-based services that support our seniors, support our caregivers, support those who take care of our seniors, support the families. It, what it does, it promotes their ability to age in place. Now, would it be great if these services continue so that we can continue that cultural perspective that we hold so dear? That we take care of our manu koo. And through this legislation, it aims to do that. And so I can only ask that you continue to support the legislation to give us the additional funding that is needed to maintain the service level. This doesn't provide for additional growth necessarily, but it does provide to maintain the services to our seniors who are at home. These are seniors who require support in their homes. It may be a bath, it may be a meal, it may be legal services, it may be all those three. We're helping our seniors to age in place. Wouldn't it be great that you, one day, becoming a senior citizen of Guam, know that these services are in place so that when you wake up in the morning, you're not waking up in an institution that is so unfamiliar and cold? You wake up in the same room that you raise your children in in that, should you pass on, it's done in a comfortable, warm environment. And although maybe death and dying is not on the agenda of those in the legislative body or anyone else, they think, wow, that's pretty extreme. But that's what we're striving for. We're working with the seniors of Guam. And I, I can begin to, to express my support and my appreciation for the three who spoke because you really are on target, not just for the seniors of Guam, but also for those who are accessing welfare services, our foster care program, those who are abused and neglected, our homeless program. All these three are social issues that need the support of government. That until we have partnerships that expand and are self-sustaining, we need to lend our support. We need to lend our support to take care of our kids, our kids who need a home whose parents have, I'm sorry to say, have failed them. And they need a new home, they need a new placement, they need to be, they don't need to worry about where they're going to go. They know they have a place to go. Just imagine us being a young child and not sure where our next meal is going to come from or who's going to hug us, who's going to wake us up. And I agree with Bethany. I think the, the provision of funds to give them the opportunity as foster parents to allow them to go to private school, that's a testament of our community, that's a testament of our government, that we don't marginalize them because they give them enough resources to do that. So kudos to that program for putting those amounts in that are able to satisfy that. We need to support the shelter and the homeless programs. These are real life realities that we experience. And all the senators, all of you, Senator White Chair, Senator Trelawney, Madam Chair, which I now have gotten down pat, Senator Munia, Senator Tai DeGui, Senator Mary Torres, and I go. And of course, our oversight, our, our chairman for the Committee on Appropriations. You all know, you all know too well that these services is what makes Public Health and Social Services so diverse. We work on Public Health and Social Services. Our department covers health, environmental health, welfare and senior citizens. And Senator Kelly Marsh, my apologies, I, I'm just now seeing your on-screen, ma'am. But our services, they're so widespread and they cover the lives of many people on Guam, if not many, if all the people on Guam. But these key services today that we are speaking of, they are our senior citizen services and our welfare services. And for countless years, the Division of Senior Citizens has had over matching funds of general fund funding to sustain the services that they provide to the elderly, our manu koo, our parents, our grandparents. And welfare services are just as equally important. We need to take care of all those parents who are taking care of our kids in their formative years to provide a safe home for victims of abuse and to take care of our homeless population. So I urge your support, I ask for your support. Thank you, Speaker Barnes, for introducing this piece of legislation. And I know Ms. Bethany talked about COVID nineteen. If you could provide this as soon as possible, it would really have us be able to focus on other programs such as the need to respond and continued need to respond to COVID nineteen. That's ongoing, it's evolving, it's dynamic and it's really pulling on a lot of resources in, in the department. But I will assure you that the funds here, should they be appropriated or, I'm sorry, maybe appropriated, passed by you over for the governor's, uh, review in action, that these, these funds will be used to safeguard these programs. And also wanted to make a note so that, um, there's, of course, uh, the Senator, my Oversight Chair. I know you appreciate this, like many other senators. For the Division of Senior Citizens, one of the services was the suspension of home-delivered weekend meals for all of fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So the question is, gee, how come seniors aren't expressing any concern or there doesn't seem to be any, um, attention to that suspension because we have not suspended the service? Within the Division of Senior Citizens, we have reprogrammed funds and funds were identified in the division that is able to sustain that until such a measure like this, Bill four hundred dash thirty-five is moved forward and really addresses the problem before us, which is to fund these core community-based services for our seniors, their families, our children or victims of abuse and those who are homeless. On behalf of the Department of Public Health and Social Service, because I ask all members of the Guam Legislature, present and not present at today's public hearing, to please support the passage of Bill four hundred dash thirty-five. Thank you so much. And we are preparing and to subject to your questions, uh, and so thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Senator Teresa, if you may continue, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I want to thank all of those who testified today. Um, very much appreciate your testimony and, uh, Mr. Suzuki, uh, thank you for your testimony and I totally agree with you. It, it is unconscionable that these would be the pe- the people or the, those people in Guam that would be targeted or threatened with, uh, cuts in services before any other part of the government of Guam. I very much agree that that is unconscionable. And, uh, Ms. Taylor, again, thank you for participating today and always being, uh, here for the foster parents and foster children. Um, I think, I don't see. Stephanie? Okay. Um, Devin, do, are, I heard you say you're a private investigator. Are, is that, are you running your own business or where do you work, may I ask?
Hafaday, hafaday, yes. So I was a private investigator in Los Angeles and in Hawaii and, uh, just pending the COVID situation, I'm trying to see where we're going to go with that here on Guam.
Okay, thank you. All right. And, uh, all right. And so as to the budget shortfall, of course, uh, we've all known about the budget shortfall that was impending for public health since the, the, the bill came out of committee, the budget bill and, um, you know, we had a, you know, very heated discussion during our budget, uh, as to how we were going to fund this shortfall. So while everybody wants to fund the shortfall, yeah, we just need to assure today, I think, during this hearing, that we are actually, you know, finding, uh, money and if that is available, then by all means, yeah, let's get it there as soon as possible. I agree with the Director, the sooner the better so that they can plan and, and, uh, I guess so Director, yeah, we, um, as part of our, you know, fight during the budget bill, we, we tried to, uh, allocate all the balance of the Healthy Futures Fund towards public health. And, uh, there was a further amendment to share that with the Cancer, um, Treatment Fund. And so that's actually in the statute now or in the public law right now. We also tried to, um, We also tried to allocate all available balances from, I mean, sorry, all lapses from public health to public health, so that anything would be able to cover, personnel would be able to cover these very critical programs, and would be able to cover Medicaid, of course. And if I could just ask you, in regards to your list, Mr. Director Sinagastin, the, are there any other locally funded programs besides these on your list?
With our, not me.
Yeah, I need. So this is the list of programs that during the discussion back in September that was identified in order to meet the amount that we would be at with regards to our 2021 budget. So we had to go and figure out how we would operate, and I know, not ask those, Senator Talahe, Madam Chair, but I know one of the concerns was that there was a discussion or talk among the department staff with regards to layoffs. And so that was not the direction the department was taking. We cannot afford a layoff or even think about a layoff within the Department of Public Health and Social Services, not just because of the core services we provide, but also because of our response and our need of manpower to respond to COVID-19. What has come to light since this is, of course, we continue to look at our budget, is a TV program that would also need additional funding. Do you know how much, tell me you're talking about? So that would be a second program that, I'm sorry, an additional program. But like I also did share with you, there were funding within the Division of Senior Citizens that has allowed us to not have the impact of no weekend feeding to the seniors, so that is continuing today. So there, there is that room, a little wiggle room there, but not too much. But that's really it. This is coming from the division heads. We had a meeting, we talked about the impact. They all had to roll up their sleeves and come up with ideas and suggestions as to how public health and social services would operate in 2020, this fiscal year, given the reduced amount.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Director. So again, my question was, are there any other locally funded programs within the department?
The TV program, yeah. That's the one I referenced earlier.
All right. What about the Division of Environmental Health?
Uh, no. When we did the budget review, based on what amounts were listed, based on, like, for example, Healthy Future Funds. No, no, environmental health is, environmental health based on the 2021 budget is fine.
No, the question is, are there other locally funded programs within the Department of Public Health and Social Services? Local funds, this was made because these are the programs that we use that are highly dependent on local funds. And I'm asking you if there are any other programs within the department that are dependent on local funds?
The TV program.
All right. That's the only thing. What about environmental health?
That's, Madam Chair, that's what I was saying. Environmental health is fine for 2021.
No, is it funded by local funds is the question. I'm asking you, are there other programs besides these very critical programs that are funded by local funds in the department, in the entire department? That's the question, please.
Right, right. Yes, Madam Chair. And it is local funds, and as I was saying, there's special funds, but at the end of the day, they really are local funds. So with regards to the environmental health, they have the Environmental Health Fund. What is this? The sanitary inspection?
Yes, Mr. Director, I think, why don't we just be very specific, what Senator Therese is asking? List down all the programs that are locally funded. That's all she wants to know, is what is the other issues? Not, not if you have enough money or not in the, in 2021. It's what are they? Okay, that's all she wants to know. Not if it's good for funding or not, just what they are. That's all. Just keep it simple.
It's, it's, right, it's the TV program. But she had also asked, you know, Mr. Chair about environmental health.
Yes. Is that, is that locally funded?
Environmental health is locally funded.
Are there any other programs? Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Director, are there any other programs in your department that are locally funded?
Other than the one listed, no, no, Madam Chair.
There are no locally funded programs in your department, except for.
There, there are, I'm sorry, ma'am. There are locally funded programs, but in terms of shortfalls for 2021.
I'm not asking about shortfall, I'm asking. All right, Mr. Director, I'm just going to lay it out. You've obviously made a list of where you want to cut in your department based on which programs are dependent on federal funds. But you're not, you're refusing to tell me what other programs you have in your department that are also funded by local funds. In other, in other words, I just wanted to see, and I want the public to see where you made your choices to put these most critical services on the line before any other services. And so, you know, maybe that was a, a great decision, but I think the public, you know, has the right to see that. Like where, what were you choosing? Why did you pick these programs? These, why did you pick the seniors above any other program that's locally funded in your department? That, that's, that's why I want the list. But I'm going to move on, Mr. Chair, and I'm going to ask the department to please submit that list in writing. I, I also wanted to talk about, and you know, of course, I really was hoping, because really the issue here is not whether public health needs money. We, we strenuously agree that they need money. And we want them to get money, and we also want them to make very, very wise decisions with this money. But we really were hoping that BBMR, DOA, would be here to confirm a couple of things, Mr. Mr. Chair. You know, first of all, we are. When we started this hearing, it's, it's finally been transmitted now, so we are able to review a fiscal note in the middle of the hearing. And so that's one thing. But I would like, so the fiscal note confirms that, that from this 11.5 million, there's actually 6 million that was previously appropriated to public health for Medicaid, and that that should be given to public health and not available anymore in this 11.5 million-dollar fund balance. And I guess I want to confirm with, with public health if they have received that 6 million-dollar appropriation.
Let me check with, can you hear Tommy? You know that we had, we had, I'm sorry.
Senator Therese, just to let you know, as the ORB has been looking at the system, none of that 6 million has been moved to public health. So maybe public health can confirm that, but it has been moved. And because the way the bill is written, we can reprogram that 6 million to make sure, and that, I was going to ask that question later on, on that one.
Tess, can you confirm that?
The 2000, the 6 million, which is from the 2018, is included, you're right, it is included in the 11.5 million. And the 3.8 million that was appropriated also from 2019, HFF, to 2020 fiscal year, fiscal year 2020 budget, hasn't been touched. So those 9.3 million is within that 11.5 million at the end of the audited financial, financial funding for. So that, that's in there, that's in the 11.5.
That's what, thank you very much, Tess. That's what I've been finding to, Mr. Chair, when you look at the past appropriations of the FY18 fund balance, and that they, they've already identified 9 million for public health, and I've not heard public health, yeah, during this budget crisis, that they are having demand this 9 million be, be put into their accounts, apparently. I mean, it's a fund balance, Healthy Futures, so it should be available.
Yes, and, and you're correct, Senator Therese. And that's what I was going to be concerned about at the end. That's why I asked it earlier with the director, if we received the 6 million. But as we move along, we'll, we'll wrap this up, because when we do the committee report, and at the end, I'll, I'll ask the final questions, and I will be very specific, and it'll close the loop exactly what you're talking about, our reference to this bill. So we can just make this, keep the bill whole as intended, bill honored, and we just stay focused on one. Thank you, Senator Therese.
All right. Well, Bill is a Public Health and Social Services fund balance, so I just want to make sure that, yeah. If, if they get this money, it's, it was previously appropriated for Medicaid, or, and so if they use it for Medicaid, I think we've given them flexibility, yeah, in their budget this year. And we've carried over every prior appropriation from FY19 was carried over to FY20, which was carried over to FY21. And so I wanted DOA or BBMR to confirm why that money is, is not been transferred yet, Mr. Chair.
We'll, we'll, we'll check on that, Senator Therese.
All right. And then, if I could also.
If I may, just as a point of information, please, because one of the presenters needs to leave to take care of the children. Ms. Bethany and Mr. Chair has to leave real soon, and she got back on. So if anybody would have questions for her, I do have one, but she said she has to leave real soon. I apologize, Senator Therese.
Okay, thank you, Speaker, and thank you, Bethany. I did have one question relative to that, is if Ms. Archangel could confirm, have the foster payments ever not been made by the Department of Public Health? Is this the first time that they are threatening to not pay foster children?
Yes, for FY2021, because there's not enough funding given to public health.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, I'll, I'll stand back, Mr. Chair, while we have other questions for, for Ms. Bethany? If you want.
Yeah. Do you have a question for Ms. Bethany, Senator Therese? You want to ask her? No, nothing. Madam Speaker, you want to ask the question before we move on to the others, so we can wrap that one up? Because I was going to save for the tail end, but if Bethany has to leave, then please ask it now, and then we have her, have her go.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, thank you, Ms. Bethany, again, for coming back on. I, I just want to share with you that I know, working closely and looking at the Congressional Research Surveys, they've released some information in reference to increased percentages from foster care programs. And can you tell me if Guam has received anything, or has any of one of this program reached out to our congressman, or anything as it relates to the impact of receiving resources in reference to the foster care program and the money from the coronavirus relief fund? Are you aware of anything?
Am I aware of any other funds that are supporting foster care? Is that what you're asking?
No, based on the coronavirus funds that get expended out, we just got word and saw that, based on the CRS, the Congressional Research Services, that there have been percentages in reference to resources coming down to the different states. Before it's 50/50, and now we're looking at between 80 and 83%. And I wanted to know if you have heard anything from Congress, or have you reached out to our congressman to see if there's any resources or any other money coming in from the federal government as it relates to foster care and funding through the coronavirus relief funds coming in for foster care? Have you heard, asked the congressman, received any resources, any programs? Because that's something that we just found out the other day, too, and we want to tap into it, but because you do the program here on Guam, have you heard of the program? Have you been given anything as a foster care program?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. We would love to be a part of anything that is set aside for foster care, for foster children and foster families. I, as a foster parent, have only received, I, I believe through the CARES Act, we received $300 for each child for, for the COVID, during the COVID pandemic. But that is the only extra support that we have received. $300 for each foster child in our home.
So thank you very much for that answer, Bethany. And maybe, Mr. Chair, we can follow up with the director on this program as we, we are looking at the report right now from the Congressional Research Services, and something, new resources that can come into to programs like this to help out. So I just thought that, that I would bring it up. Thank you, Bethany.
All right. Okay, now we'll continue on now with all the other senators, okay? So Senator Louise Munia?
Oh, I still have some questions.
Oh, you still have a question? Okay, go ahead, Senator Therese.
First, before she leaves, because she has to leave. She's taking care of the kids.
Does anybody have any questions? If you can wave your hand, I'll know if you have any question for Bethany. If not, then, okay, Louis, Senator Louise?
Thank you. Actually, I just wanted to thank Bethany Taylor for, for the opportunity to listen to her side of the story as, as far as being a foster parent and a part of Harvest House. And, and please give my regards to Mr. Taylor as well and all the teachers there at Harvest. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else would like to say anything to Bethany?
Just, just a quick, thank you, just a quick one. Again, Bethany, you know, I've been an advocate for the foster care children for a long time, and I'm, and I'm glad that you're still, still working it and keeping everybody in tow, you know? It's important the information that gets to you is accurate, very, very accurate. And my concern here is that public health needs to prioritize the foster care, and I'll continue to advocate for that. So hopefully, whatever funding there is that's given to them, we're all in dire need that these children, the most vulnerable, were received firsthand. Thank you again, Bethany. Hello to all the foster women, foster care mothers out there and fathers. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, does anyone else? Senator Mary, Senator Kelly, real quick, do you want to have any questions for Bethany? Word she takes off.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Bethany, are you experiencing any particularly, any difficulties during this pandemic climate, or are you managing fairly well?
Thankfully, my husband and I are currently still working, so we are okay. Though I am a part of the chat group and the community help to all the foster parents on Guam. And there is, there is, I can tell you at least one foster parent in particular that's struggling financially a great deal because she is reserving this, receiving the stipend, but yet the block grant is really struggling. We're, we're having a really hard time getting our children enrolled in the block grant. And so she is putting two kids through daycare, her two foster children through daycare. And so almost all of her monthly stipend, the whole stipend, almost is going just toward daycare services. Or many of, some of our foster families have had to hire a nanny or hire somebody to help them because they work full-time and the daycares have been closed, and they have to go to work. So instead of having to try to refind another foster home for a foster child, which would make more trauma and just cause a more devastating impact on the child, the parents are going way above and beyond in paying for services because right now, because of the pandemic, we're not getting the services that we need for our children. So I'm currently paying for three kids to go through private education. And so most of our funds through foster care go to, go to private education. It's, it's difficult. I mean, we, we sacrifice on a daily basis for these kids, and because it's important that they are treated like every other child. And I, I, I also would like to consider the fact that we have probably been paid the same stipends for a very long time, and I don't know what the ratio or the comparison would be if you compared our stipend with, from the states, if it's even comparable, especially living on Guam and the, the rise of payment for food and, and clothing and everything. So I, I would definitely consider rallying, rallying this and, and supporting our foster families because we need as many families as we can to take care of the vulnerable children.
Bethany, and I think also the vulnerable children probably need a little more consideration, and, and the, the parents that take care of primarily the therapeutic children also need a lot of help. So I will cling on you, Bethany. I, I feel for you, and God bless you. As you pray for others, we also pray for you. So just keep that in mind. But I'll be reaching out to you separate from this meeting. And thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Mary. Senator Kelly? Senator Kelly, you have anything you want to ask?
No. I, and I was very grateful for the question that was just asked by the previous senator. It's important for us to hear about how things are going. So I appreciate all of our foster care families, the work that's being done. And, yeah, it, it was important to hear about the issues that are at hand, Sijas Masi.
All right. Thank you. Bethany, I identified you from the Harvest Baptist Church. Are you associated with the Harvest Christian Academy School?
I would like to be associated as the Executive Director of Harvest Health, which is a nonprofit to the foster community on Guam.
All right. Okay. And, and thank you, Bethany, and God bless you for all that you do. Okay? That wraps it up. You have a nice day. Drive safe and be, and take care. Senator Reese, we're back with you, Senator Reese, and, and let's wrap it up, so we can move along with the other senators. Thank you.
Thank you. So, so the list that was provided by Public Health as for the shortfall does not include on this list Medicaid. So I just wanted to confirm with Tess. Yesterday, you provided my office with an update on the FY twenty appropriations for Medicaid and how much in FY twenty lapse funds is remaining. So the chart says there's about ten point two million that should be available in Medicaid lapses. Is that correct?
Yes, Senator. For two thousand twenty.
All right. And our FY twenty-one budget has language in it to roll over that entire amount for Medicaid in FY twenty-one. And in, in previous meetings and during the budget, you also told us that we need about twenty-four million in order to access the full one hundred twenty-nine million in Medicaid. And so we've outright appropriated thirteen point eight nine million. And so it's about eleven million short. So if with the lapses of ten point two million, you're, you're close to accessing that full one hundred twenty-nine. Is that correct, Medicaid?
Yes. Yes, Senator.
We received the lapses. Close to correct. All right. And so Tommy, or the Director of Public Health, if we've also in the budget bill appropriated lapses, all, all, any lapses for public health for the shortfall operations? And I just wanted to find out if there are any other lapses, non-Medicaid lapses, I guess, that, that are available pursuant to the Budget Act that was just passed for use in FY twenty-one? Or what's your calculation of any lapses?
Hello, Tom? Can you, can you hear us? Our video looks frozen, but can you, it's frozen, but can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, okay. So the video looks frozen, but go ahead. Tom, do you have any, for Senator, no, I'm sorry, Chairman, or Committee Health? Our ASO does not have any information available at this time, Senator Charli, with regards to local lapses from FY twenty.
Why is that? No estimation of your own lapses?
Yeah, they.
You know, in trying to reconcile what, what was made available, I want to estimate maybe like three million, but those are for the, through just General Fund and Healthy Futures Fund. And, and the only, the only concern I have is that, you know, your Section Two, I mean, Section Nine indicates, you know, the carryover, where it says any lapse. I'm looking at it as lapse only in, in the Medicaid, Medicare, I mean Medicaid, MIP program.
Okay. There's another provision in the budget bill. It's back in miscellaneous provisions that, that says.
Okay. I can reconcile the, the Public Health accounts and provide that information to you.
Because that's very critical, because that is how we're, yeah, hoping to ensure, because if the, the Healthy Futures only has two million left, and, you know, you get the two, you still need more than that. So, yeah.
Hey, hey. Let's move to the system.
Forty-two, page one forty-six of the budget, that's where the continuing appropriation for public health to utilize unexpendable balances. Okay? Tommy?
One of the other obstacles I'm having also is having to do with our issues that we're encountering within our AS four hundred system, that, a financial management system being used by DOA. You know, we, we're encountering issues in that we don't have a full reconciliation of, of like the carryover for like a lot of the federal funds and also the local funds. So we're, we're working that out with DOA now. So those funds will be made.
When did you, what, what is the holdup with DOA? If you're the, if you're the agency suffering from the operational shortfall, yeah, why can't they tell you the information that you need, especially lapses?
It isn't just, just on the AS four hundred.
Yeah. It's the AS four hundred financial management system that's, that's used to, to, you know, be able to get the, the data or the, the information. And right now, it's, it's not at one hundred percent. I mean, they're encountering problems, especially for those accounts that roll over into fiscal year, into the new fiscal year.
Okay. So you're saying even DOA cannot give you this information right now?
I'm not, I'm not aware of whether or not they can or can't. I just, in, in working with even Tess, Tess, even working with DOA accounting, you know, they can reconcile, but they, they have to do it all manually, I believe.
Okay. Well, what did they tell you your lapses are? What, what have you guys estimated on your own as your lapse?
Okay. Senator Reese and the Public Health, Public Health, you need to wrap it up. You need, need, get, get your books in order. Get your AS four hundred, get a DOA, because we're talking about Bill four hundred, that's thirty-five. And I, I know it's all, it's all related in, in one way or the other, because we're talking about money. But I just don't want us to drag the whole hour or two hours in talking about your inability to get a DOA. Okay? Art, take care of that. You're the new director.
Tommy will reach out to DOA. We'll, we'll take care of it.
All right, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, yeah, it's very important, Art, because the list that you've made is very threatening to the community. It's, it's really unconscionable, in my opinion, if you have lapses that are available to you and you could, you are not following up on those lapses and making them available to these people and these programs. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll yield to the other senators and hopefully get another one.
Thank, thank you, Senator Reese. Senator Louise, do you have any question to anyone that has testified that are still here, mainly Public Health and Devin and, yeah?
Yeah. I guess my, my, my initial concern, too, is such as the Chair for Health also not having BBMR here, so that we can ask them what those numbers are. I, I want to make sure that these programs are taken care of. And first of all, actually, before I go on with Public Health, I just want to acknowledge that, looking at, watching Devin as a man now, really makes me tear up, because him and my daughter Amanda were classmates when, when they were four or five. I think along with the Senator Teresa's daughter as well, too. They were all classmates growing up in school. And so it makes me tear up to think that, that they're all grown up already and, you know, we wish that they would stay four or five years old like we remember them. So nice to see you, Devin, and, and happy that you're doing very well. Amanda says hello.
It's so nice to see you guys. I'm sorry to cut in.
Yeah, it's okay. Thank you so much for being here to testify and, and also to see, you know, his, his, the, the fruition of his, his, his foster care. Really, that's very important. And so I think we just want to make sure that we acknowledge that all of these programs are all important to us and, and the community. And we want to make sure that we take care of them, and we don't want to see them jeopardized by funds and, you know, lack of funds for that matter. And what my concern is, is not having, you know, BBMR here, so that we can ask them what the purse holds right now. Because it seems like we're going, we're going back in time and we're trying to, to appropriate money that probably has already been appropriated, and do we have that money? So that's really what my concern is. I want to make sure that we do have that money available to continue these programs. And, and as much as we put it down on paper, it, we all know that it's very important to us to take care of the foster kids and the senior citizens. We, we want to do everything possible to take care of them. And, yeah, but my concern is really just the dollar signs, and I want to see if that money is really there. Is it really there for us to make sure that we get this bill passed? But as far as questions, I think maybe we could continue that discussion with BBMR. And there is no question to Department of Public Health and Social Services that these, these programs are vital and very important to the community. So thank you again, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
All right. Thank you, Senator Louise. And if push comes to shove, and we don't have enough information, if this, when this bill moves forward, I will ask for a committee of the whole when we're on the floor on this. All right? Thank you. Senator Mary, do you have any questions, ma'am?
No, Mr. Chair. I'll just follow the progress of the bill. I certainly see the need for it. It, it's just a little surprising that, you know, we're at this point right now. I'm, I'm a little shocked by, you know, the, the letter that the Speaker read. So, you know, we'll, we'll follow through and I'll just keep close tabs on the progress.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Mary. Senator Kelly, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Sijas Masi, Mr. Chair. Yeah, you know, it's very important to me to make it to this public hearing, because of course, as has been mentioned from beginning to this point, these are critical services. They're important for our community. And I definitely support problem solving. We've got a fiscal crisis probably like never before, and we all need to put on our problem solving hats. So of course, supporting public health, foster care, the MnMco, health programs, like all of it. But I, I do echo the concerns that have been brought up about the six million, why, you know, whether that's been pursued and the, the other funds that have been discussed, totaling up to nine million. Because if we're going to use this wisely and we're going to stretch every dollar that we can, we need to make sure that we're not stepping over some that, that could be gotten and then perhaps using other monies for something else. So I, I, too, wanted to listen in and get as full a story as possible, so that we can really understand what's going on here. But no question that this particular point, Sijas Masi.
All righty. Thank you, Senator Kelly. Senator Teller, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the opportunity and to those who testified this morning, Devin, as well as Bethany and everyone from Public Health, I really appreciate the hard work you're doing. And, and to the listening public, you know, I think just to let you know that it's important that you get all this information, that we're transparent and all the information that was provided to us that, and the questions that we ask, they have a right to know what they are. And, you know, not having this information to provide, you know, from public health, it makes it very difficult, you know, for people to follow along and then having to wait for another one. So I, I hope because of lack of so much information, that maybe we can have another public hearing and this time provide all the, the answers to our questions the next public hearing before we go into the committee of the whole, gives an opportunity for the, the public to really see what's going on. So other than that, and, and also, you know, I don't, I don't like rushing, so, you know, but that's another thing, another discussion, Mr. Chair, we'll, we'll talk about. Regarding Tess's comment, Tess, good morning. You mentioned something earlier. You said that given public health, it does not have enough for our foster care. But within the budget, are you given the flexibility to move funding around? You know, in, in the event that, okay, you want to fund the foster care program fully, that you can actually move money around? Are, are you given that flexibility in, in the FY twenty twenty-one budget?
Not me personally, but we do, if there's lapse money on other programs, I do move them with approval of our Director and of course, with approval of BBMR and our Governor. Yes, within our division, there is lapse money, I move them around where it's needed.
And, and it's up to the Director whether, where he decides to put that money, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But it, the, the bill does give that flexibility. And there was a letter that was read earlier, you know, I was listening to it, I was interrupted by something else, but it, what was the date on that letter? September something, right?
September fifteen.
Okay. September fifteen. Is, was that forwarded to us, Mr. Chair?
No, it wasn't that. It was Director Torres, the, the Acting Chief of Staff, Office of the Governor. I'll, I'll send you a copy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, because I, it was coming in and out and breaking out, the muffling sound, so I couldn't hear it very well. Thank you for that. And I'm, I'm looking forward to the list of locally funded programs that, that Director Sinagastin. It's kind of odd I'm going Sinagastin and Sinagastin here, but I'm looking forward to that list. How soon can we get that list, Director?
We, we have the list. It'll be ready in about thirty minutes after hearing. We have over forty-eight, we have forty-eight local accounts, and we'll provide that list.
Oh, great. Thank you so much for, for being expeditious on that. I appreciate that. Well, other than that, you know, I'm, I'm still kind of like coming between this and reading the fiscal note, you know, and trying to come in between it, but, you know, take heads or tails. But I greatly appreciate if we could have this fiscal note a lot sooner before the public hearing, it'd be very helpful, so we could have additional questions to ask. But other than that, I, I asked Mr. Chair that you may consider another public hearing, you know, so that the people of Guam who are listening into this public hearing can hear the answers as well and provide testimony afterwards. Because there are people who actually write to senators and, and have questions for us or why wasn't this answered? So it's a great avenue for transparency. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Senator Teller. Maybe I'll just call for a roundtable on the appropriations side. Madam Speaker, does any other Senator would like to ask any question? Because I'm going to have the Speaker give her final, and then I'm going to ask questions, and I'm going to wrap it up with my questions, and that's it. Senator Reese, I see you before I ask the Speaker to ask, because the Speaker will end it, and then I'll be the very last, okay?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you so much. And I just wanted to confirm, yeah, so if we could confirm a lapses for public health with DOA, we could confirm, you know, Tess pointed out a possible nine point something that's already been appropriated from the HFF, Healthy Futures Fund, versus the fiscal note, which says only six million's been appropriated, and if we can get confirmation on that. And then, you know, we, and if this two million is available, then by all means, let's give it to public health. I'm, I'm just a little bit, you know, concerned and perplexed that we went through all of that debate on the bill, the budget bill, and on the Governor's proposed bill for adding seven million dollars in revenue, as opposed to if this two million is available in Healthy Futures, why, why didn't they propose it at that time? So DOA's not here, so I'm not sure why. And, but it's, that's the part that I, it's very confusing. If they feel this money is available, why wouldn't they advocate for that instead of additional seven million? Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Teller.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. And before I ask the Speaker to do our closing, I'm going to go ahead and ask just a few, just a couple of questions. Art, you, you're asking for flexibility of local funds for make, for matching funds to be allowed to be reprogrammed? Is, is, is that what, what, what your statement was earlier? You wanted to ask for flexibility?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
That, that is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And Tessie, I like, I like how you said that, no, you, you personally don't move the money, but you, you, you made it clear, you, you moved the money, then you asked Art later, approve this somewhere we need it, right? Okay. I just want to make sure that we have an understanding, okay, how that's working, and I can see that already. Art, please, please do the, the wrap up and, and then give us a report also on your, your matching funds, because we did do ten point two million laps in twenty twenty to roll over in twenty twenty-one. Because we did do uh ten point two million uh laps uh on twenty twenty to roll over in twenty twenty one. Want to see where all the money is moving because on our side of the O B, we can see the money movement. The question would be is that if you start to reprogram anything until we catch it in the AS four hundred, we won't we won't know we won't notice it happens. It's it's happening until it's probably a couple of days later. So we we want to stay on track with you and find ways to help you. Because I think that's what uh the speaker's bill is intended, is to help the Department of Public Health. There's no doubt about that. That's what this bill is all about. And that's what Senator Teresa's been fighting for during the budgetary. And I'm in support of that. I'm just I just want you to be very careful because based on your list, this bill may come out and saying specifically that this list is what we're gonna fund only, nothing else. So I mean, just be very careful. Uh I'm looking at this list, and I'll make sure that every senator gets a copy of this letter so that they understand what the shortfalls were. And I and I agree with Senator Therese. I just question if you got forty eight um local funding programs, how did you get down to just these? I I would just have to ask that question, but I'm I'm gonna ask that. I'll I'll send you a letter requesting that specific answers. And then and then we'll work it, and then I'll share with everybody so everybody understands it. So with that, I have no further uh comments. Um Madam Speaker, if you can make the uh the closing statements on Bill four hundred dash thirty five, and we'll wrap this up, and then we'll get something moving. Thank you.
Sijus Masi, uh Sijus Masi, Mr. Chair. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to close. I just want to note to the folks here uh that Bethany uh did ask one question that she wanted to ask the committee. She's and and she wanted us to share this. Uh she said that she is also concerned if there is a lack of funding because of the new foster home that was built that is going to be used for an emergency shelter. Can someone ask that question? And can she get an answer in reference to the foster care uh home that was built uh uh recently and it's being utilized as a um shelter, uh emergency shelter at this time. But um the Bethany, uh we hope to get a follow up. I I will uh work on it. And of course, Mr. Chair, I'll work on you to ask the pertinent questions to the pertinent agencies on that question from Bethany uh as the um uh director, I guess, of the Foster Harvest Home. But I I want to share with you, thank you again for um taking the time uh to put Bill four hundred uh dash thirty five on.
Are required to be seen. Put us on on the camera.
Hearing process, I also want to share with you that when this um came up uh to my um office and to our policy team, that we wanted to make sure that um we take care of our people and in the spirit of ina famalik, that we make sure that the adult care center, the case management services, in-home services, the legal assistance services, the senior center operations, the transportation services, our home delivery meal services, the Guma uh uh Serenadot, which is the twenty-four hour adult protective services, the Division of Senior Citizens, the Foster Care Program, the uh Foster Care Stipends, the Alley Shelters one and two, Guma San Jose, and and also um I hope I'm not missing anything in there, and all the other uh the programs that literally provide continued services to those that are vulnerable within our community. And and Mr. Chair, again, um I always say this in the spirit of ina famalik as we come together, it's let's give those who really need the support and the help, the resources that it needs. And I know the Department of Public Health and Social Services are the are 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 the facilitators that work closely with the community. And if these uh programs are threatened, then let's make sure that that we as the policymaking body find that. Uh I'm not here to to put uh and 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 take away from what the mission mandates are, but we know that these programs exist. We know that a lot of times we have uh and work closely with other nonprofits and other uh stakeholders in the community. And I think that it's important that we come together as as a a uh community and that we work in making sure um that um we find some good answers, you know? Having worked at Public Defender's Office and Department of Integrated Services for disabilities and 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 just knowing that that it's about the services the government provides, then that is our mission mandate to provide the basic services for for health, safety, and education. I think that this is one bill that can we can all at least work together and try and make sure that these services in no way uh impede on the need for for our community. So thank you, uh Mr. Chair. Uh like I said, uh there is the fiscal note is what's submitted. And and I'm hoping that we can get favorable full support uh for all the programs that are needed from Bill four hundred dash thirty five. So thank you again uh for the opportunity to close. And I ask again my colleagues to seriously consider the efforts and thank everybody who came on today from Stephanie, Devin, uh Bethany, public health uh for for their testimony. Sijus Masi, Sijus from Beni DC to all those who are listening also and to us. And thank you, Mr. Chair. God bless.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony in this bill, the committee will continue to receive testimony uh for the next few days following this the this hearing for the acceptance of any additional information or public testimony on the agenda item discussed. You may submit your testimony to the mailroom of the Guam L S H in the Guam Congress Building or through email at Senator Joe S. Sinagastin at gmail dot com. And again, I want to thank everyone for attending the virtual public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestion. The virtual public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is eleven oh one. Sijus Masi, and please be safe. Take care. Bye bye.